This meeting is called to order. Madam Clerk, would you take the role, please?
Interim City Attorney Eric Coat.
Here.
Interim City Manager Thomas Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Dean.
Here.
Commissioner Bieber.
Here.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Logan.
Here.
Mayor Collins.
Here.
Welcome and thank you for participating in the City of Helena City Commission Meeting. We are pleased to be able to provide this alternative meeting format in the city's effort to broaden public participation. Please be patient as we may experience technical difficulties during the meeting. We welcome your public commentary. Please read the following tips and guidelines for the app usage and your participation. Would you rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Flag allegiance to the flag. The administrative city council minutes were received August eighteen twenty what twenty-one. Do we have any discussions? Comments on the minutes? If not, the meeting minutes will stand as submitted. Board appointments, golf advisory board, tourism business improvement district, ad hoc recruitment committee clerk. Madam Clerk, would you take over?
Mayor Commissioners, this evening you have, as the mayor stated, his recommendations for the golf advisory board, tourism business improvement district, and the ad hoc commit- recruitment committee, which is manned by the members of the commission. I would ask for you all to take up for your consideration, form a roll vote on those recommendations by the mayor this evening. If you have any questions, I'm here to answer them.
Thank you. Golf advisory board appointment of Chris Smith to the golf advisory board. Term will begin upon appointment expires on October thirty first, twenty twenty-four. Tourism Business Improvement District, TBID, appointment of Shauna Cochran to the Tourism Business Improvement District, representing an- an owner or management manager of property within the district. Term will begin upon appointment and expires on April twentieth, twenty twenty-five. The ad hoc recruitment committee, Commissioner Sean Logan, Commissioner Melinda Reed. Do we have any discussion?
Mayor.
Go ahead, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you. I apologize for my voice here. But that's the way it is tonight. I just like comment briefly about the ad hoc recruitment committee, if I may.
Can we do that when it's commission discussion?
Certainly, you bet. I'll hold off. Thanks.
Do we have any discussion on the recommended board appointments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Eric Fever here. I would move that we- we adopt your recommended appointees to those various committees.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk. You are muted. You are muted.
You'd think I'd have it by now, wouldn't you? Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Bieber.
Yes.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Consent agenda. I hear that we're going to be doing all of these together because they're for the same department. But I will listen to our interim manager if he has anything to say.
Mayor Commissioners, just I'd recommend approval of the consent agenda. Item A, claims, which is for claims paid January eighteenth, twenty twenty-two through February fourth, twenty twenty-two, in the amount of two million four hundred and twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars and eighty cents. I'd also recommend approval of items B, C, D, E, and F on the consent agenda, which all generally relate to capital transit. That's our the city's bus service for funding for the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, including the transaid funding, which is for the elderly and disabled service, the- capital equipment request, which would fund or request funding for a city bus. Westmont put in a request for their bus, and then the city's second bus would be third. Submission of the operating grant for fiscal year twenty twenty-three for one million. What is it? One point oh one million. And finally, the last two is to authorize the city manager to sign and submit the capital transit operating grant package, and finally, approval of annual update to the TCP Transportation Coordination Plan.
Any discussion from the commission? Okay, do we have any public comments? Madam Clerk, do we have any public comments? Hands raised.
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I have no hands raised and receive no written public comment.
Do we have any final commission discussion? I'll entertain a motion.
Mister Mayor, I will move consent agenda items A through F.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Dean.
Aye.
Commissioner Bieber.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Collins.
Aye.
The motion carries five to zero.
Okay, communications proposals from commissioners. I know there 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 are lots of stuff going to happen right here, so let's be cognizant of the time of others. Commissioner Logan.
Mister Mayor, as I said, I'm gonna go. I'd just like to take a minute to comment briefly about the ad hoc recruitment committee that we just approved. With the recent resignation of City Manager Carlo Scholz, obviously, we're going to need to recruit a new manager, and the first step down that road is to find an interim city manager. I think this ad hoc recruitment committee will help us organize the search for a long-term interim manager, as well as possibly later assist in any recruitment process for a permanent manager. Last week, we temporarily contracted with Thomas Jordan, and I think we're really lucky to have him for a temporary period. I think, however, the reality is that we'll need to find a qualified individual who can serve in an interim capacity for somewhere up to nine months in my estimation. This would enable a robust search for a permanent manager while ensuring there is a person who's able to manage the continuity of our city government. And to that end, I guess I'd like to suggest that we accept letters of interest for the next week from interested and qualified individuals who we can consider fill that position. I'd say at the end of that week, Commissioner Reed and I compile and review those letters of interest and come back to the full commission for a public discussion later next week, hopefully. I guess I'd interested to know if the rest of the commission feels like that's a reasonable approach.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. If I might add one point to what Commissioner Logan just described. He he alluded to this point, but I just want to draw it about out a bit more. I think one of the items for the ad hoc committee will be to bring before the full commission consideration of whether or not an interim manager is eligible to apply for the full-time position. I think that's an important discussion for us to have, so I would just add that to what was described by Commissioner Logan. Thank you.
Okay, so Commissioner Logan forward a proposal. So where are you with what he suggested? As member of the ad hoc, I'm sure you for what he said.
Yes, thank you, Mister Mayor. I I agree with the comments made by Commissioner Logan. Thank you.
Commissioner Dean.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. I'm I think this is a reasonable path forward. Appreciate Commissioner Logan and Commissioner Reed for stepping up to be on the the ad hoc recruitment committee. And I do know this is the same type of process that Bozeman used in two thousand seventeen when they were going through their recruitment process for a spring interim as well. So I think that it's not bad to follow a process that has seemed to work before. And excited to see who they bring forward as a recommendation.
Thank you. Commissioner Fever.
Thank you, Mayor, and my fellow commissioners. I I too am grateful for Commissioners Logan and Reed for taking on this task. And I'm looking forward to how they come back to the full commission for us to consider things further. This is a robust discussion I'm expecting, and I hope that there are many letters of interest to serve as our perhaps a long term, if that's a term you want to use, interim city manager. So thanks to the two of them. It's a good process.
Thank you, Commissioner Logan.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Just seems like we're in agreement on this. I think it would behoove us to begin advertising tomorrow.
But you haven't heard from me yet, Commissioner.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mister Mayor.
Gee.
I apologize. Ahead of myself.
No, that's okay. I I'm fully I'm fully on board with the process, Commissioner.
Sorry about that.
Have my voice heard, you know?
Yeah.
So, yes.
In any case, I just was gonna maybe maybe I could ask the city clerk if she might share with us where such a PSA might be advertised.
Sure, Mayor Commissioner Logan. So in the past, for my office, we typically issue a public service announcement to a variety of stakeholder groups, media contacts, internal and external staff. So I'd be happy to do that. I always share any PSA I announce as an official statement out of this office with the Public Information Officer as well. So Jacob Garson does have his own list of media contacts, and then we always ask that the additionally that any PSA that I announce out of my office is also included on social media for the City of Helena. Obviously, there are physical postings that we can put around the building, which are also standard. And then any other requests by this commission, I would be happy to accommodate.
Thank you, Danae, and thank you, Mister Mayor.
Okay, thanks. Any other communications proposals from the commissioners?
Mister Mayor, I I have two. I'll start out with something we talked about in our last regular city commission meeting in person. And that was a good meeting, and I opined at that time that I hope that we could start meeting in person more frequently. And so I would suggest that we consider as a commission that we meet at our regular commission meetings in the in the city chambers. And so the Monday meetings that we have, as such as this one, would, at least for the foreseeable future, begin to meet on a regular basis in person. But that our Wednesday administrative meetings continue to be by Zoom. So that is my idea of things going forward, and I'll be interested to see what the other commissioners think about that idea.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know for sure, you know, that there are still some logistics we need to work out when it comes to that. But I would say, because I know some commissioners are also uncomfortable with with the COVID situation still up in the air. So we could do hybrid where commissioners could come to the chambers and commissioners who are uncomfortable in the chambers who also participate through the the Zoom. Commissioner Reed.
Thank you, Mister Mayor. Echoing what you just said, as a single working parent, sometimes it's challenging for me to be in person, so I would request that we maintain a hybrid option. The idea of being in chambers is great, and I would love to be there when I can, but sometimes childcare is challenging. So I would appreciate if we could keep a hybrid option. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Fever.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Commissioner Reed. I I concur. I I don't want to shut anybody into a position where they don't aren't comfortable. And I do recognize the single parent issue that Commissioner Reed deals with. And so if it's a good idea, if it's not a good idea, then we don't need to do it. I mean, Zoom works. I just think that for the cohesion going forward of our commission, it's useful so far as we are able to meet in person that we do so. But again, I would not want our administrative meetings to be in the chambers. I think we're fine dealing with each other in a very informal fashion through Zoom.
Thank you. Commissioner Dean.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. I'm I think that maintaining the hybrid format is wise moving forward. I would say even past COVID, I think that the last two years have shown us that I'd rather have folks be able to participate in some way, even if they might have something else going on before or after. And I'll be excited to be back in person as much as possible, too. So in favor of, you know, opening us back up to the chambers for the regular meetings, but also maintaining a Zoom option. I know previously we've discussed we'll we'll leave Zoom in place for the public for the foreseeable future, because it has been a great way for folks to become more engaged, and I think have a better idea of what's actually going on during our proceedings, but very comfortable with moving forward with that hybrid option.
Thank you. Commissioner Logan.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. We totally agree with everything that's been said. I'm meeting in person and maintaining the hybrid option.
Thank you. Acting City Manager Jordan.
Yeah, Mayor Commissioners, if I could just ask for clarification, it's the intent of the commission to generally meet in person, but keep the hybrid option. For context, when we advertise legal public hearing notices, I want to make sure that we don't just say only Zoom. We want to make sure that if we're going to move forward counting on at least three commissioners being in chambers, I think we want our public hearing notices to reflect that.
Yes.
Okay.
You are correct. That's that's what we're looking forward to. Okay, any other comments on this topic? Commissioner Fever.
No further comment. If it takes a vote of the commission, I guess I would urge the commission to vote favor of that. If it doesn't take a vote, we can just do it. It's up to you, Mayor.
There's consensus. I thought you said you had two. Said you had two items you wanted to discuss, right?
I I well, my second item, I'm sorry. I guess we've concluded then on when when we meet it. So that's a good thing, and certainly we will comply with the law to make sure that no citizen of Helena is cut out of their opportunity to participate. I concur with the city manager on that. My second motion has to do with Ukraine. I think like most of us, we are very what shall we say? We are we stand in awe and amazement of the of Ukraine and how it is standing up to the aggression that it currently suffering. And I've received a number of requests from Helena's citizens that this city acknowledged that we are in concert with Ukraine so far as we are able. And of course, that's not a lot right here in Helena. But we could show our solidarity in a number of ways. Perhaps the simplest way going forward would be that we fly in the city county building, and I guess that would take the county to agree of the Ukraine flag underneath the the American and the Montana flag, and we do the same at the civic center at a minimum. And then we ask the governor to light up the Capitol Building with the blue and yellow colors of the Ukraine flag, and then also fly the the Ukraine flag on the Capitol Plaza or wherever appropriate, as the governor might deem. And if that is what we conclude to do, Mayor, I guess since you are our leader, you would ask the governor to do same. I know that some other folks have talked about lighting up the 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 fire tower, and I thought that was a good idea at one time, and then I was apprised of how that wouldn't really structurally work, that it's not just a matter of changing the light bulbs. It would take considerable time and frankly, more structural issues than perhaps I would have ever understood, but I think I do now. And that may also be the issue of trying to light up the civic center and certainly the city county building. It's not like the city can just turn on blue and yellow lights and say, we've shown our solidarity. But I think if we are able to fly the flag of the of Ukraine at this time in in place, and we make a request of our state's governor that he show, if you will, the state's support for Ukraine, I believe that would be an excellent move on our part, and so that is my request.
Thank you, Commissioner Fever. Acting City Manager Jordan, are there any legalities we need to know about?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head. I defer to Eric if he can identify any.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, you're in a different role now. Okay, my apology. City Attorney Court. Are there any legalities we need to be aware of if we if we so desire to fly the Ukrainian flag?
Not that I can think of off the top of my head, but I will certainly give it some thought, and I will notify you if I come across anything that causes me concern.
Thank you. At this time, the are there any discussions on Commissioner Fever's proposals?
Mister Mayor, I would be supportive of that. Every St. Patrick's Day, we fly the Irish flag at the Capitol, and I think right now it's a moment, obviously, especially in a community that has a number of Ukrainian Americans. I think that it's appropriate and, you know, continue to pray for all the citizens of Ukraine right now and the surrounding NATO nations. But appreciate Commissioner Fever for bringing that forward.
Any other comments from the commission?
I may.
Please, go ahead, Commissioner.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Fever. I appreciate. And efforts to recognize what's going on and and the Russia and and causing people in Ukraine. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Is it only me, or are you breaking up Commissioner Logan?
I very well could be.
I think I think you are breaking up because I
I'll give it a I'll give it another try. Thank you, Commissioner Fever. I support your proposed ideas.
Commissioner Reed.
Thank you. I also don't have any objections to Commissioner Fever's proposing. Thank you.
I'm also in concert with that. I I think it's showing some solidarity to the people of Ukraine. And I know people, some people may say, but we're way here in Helena, Montana, but we're a part of a bigger the bigger problem. We are a part of the world, and we should also participate. At this time, I will ask for public comments. Do we have any public comments on this?
Mister Mayor, Commissioners, I see no hands raised and no written public comment for the commission comment item.
Acting City Manager Jordan, I saw your hand was up.
Nope, you you covered it. I was just gonna suggest asking for a public comment, but if we don't have any, I would just seek clarity on on the direction. My understanding is we're going to put a Ukrainian flag at the city county building and the civic center, and then, Mister Mayor, you're going to request of the governor that similar be done at the Capitol Building?
Yep, I can forward the request. And but I think we also need to pass that with the county commissioners, right?
I will double check the interlocal agreement for the building, but I think day-to-day management of the building is up to the to the city.
Okay, thank you. Acting City Manager Jordan. All right, moving along. Report of the City Attorney, interim City Attorney Eric Coat.
Nothing to report this evening, Mister Mayor.
Thank you. Report of the City Manager, interim City Manager Thomas Jordan.
Yeah, Mayor, I have a few things. I will make them very brief. I just wanted to update the commission that the former manager did receive a letter from Our Redeemers Lutheran Church with a proposal for their property. Think it can basically be summed up as they are proposing to sell a large portion of their property to the city, and then the city would develop that for the affordable housing goals. I have been in contact with the council president of the church and let them know that we are continuing to move this forward, but there does need to be a significant amount of work in in developing the project and coming up with a budget for the work that the city would have to do if it were to purchase this property. Secondly, the the Westside, Westside Woods subdivision and annexation, I just wanted to let the commission know and the public know that it is still within the thirty-day window to provide the applicant findings of fact, conclusions of law as to the commission's denial. And so for that reason, I think we should still be very careful about speaking outside the record about the proposal. And we do expect that the applicant to resubmit an application, so we should avoid ex parte communications. I know there has been discussion publicly about Rodney Street and the street maintenance assessment lawsuit. I just wanted to let the commission know that staff is moving forward and will be bringing a resolution. Or at least we're looking at whether a resolution needs to be brought, but we're keeping the project going with bid opening in March and using the general fund. We're using an intercap loan to repay the general fund once the lawsuit is settled. So the goal is to keep that project going regardless of the street maintenance lawsuit. And then finally, Commissioner Reed asked at the last admin meeting about the Housing Trust Fund, just a brief update on that. Staff is working with a consultant to finalize the the policies manual that was required by the resolution. And we did unfortunately, I think we have an issue to work through. We identified a hiccup between the resolution, which authorizes the city manager to expend funds out of the Housing Trust Fund, and the ordinance which created the advisory board says the city commission approves the funding. So I think we want to resolve that one way or another. Finalize the Housing Trust Fund Policies Manual, come up with all of the legal documents, and then we will be ready to start processing uses of that money.
Thank you, Acting Manager Jordan. Do we have any comments or questions for the acting manager, Commissioner Fever?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And for the acting city manager, I I appreciate his report that tells us exactly what's going on. I like that. And but you kind of raised my ears there just a little bit. There's some question about who makes the final decision, how the trust funds are expended. Yeah, our resolution was not clear on that.
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Fever, the resolution explicitly said the city manager manages it and determines the expenditure of the funds. I think within the context of every every budget approved by the commission, but the Irish, I'm sorry, the resolution that created the fund is explicit in that regard, but the ordinance that created the advisory board for Housing Trust Fund says they make a recommendation to the city commission for decision.
Okay, I bet you'll figure it out and be bringing something forward to us in the near future. Thank you very much. Commissioner Dean.
Thanks, Mister Mayor. My question is on the Our Redeemers Lutheran Church project offer. Do we so previously, all of the organizations that were involved with that project were going to be presenting kind of a more in-depth review during one of the ARPA upcoming ARPA conversations, so that we actually had a clear idea of what was actually being asked of us. Is that still going to happen? And I guess will this kind of change in direction be reflective of that?
Mayor Collins, Commissioner Dean, the intent is still to move forward with that pending longer-term interim city manager. I guess from from my perspective, the the proposal was a little bit more or is a little bit more concrete than what we had previously expected in terms of what the roles of the church and the YMCA or the YWCA habitat and the Friendship Center would involve. This is a pretty concrete proposal to just purchase the property for one point four million dollars. And if I remember- And if I remember right, the tentative plan was that 2.4 million dollars of ARPA funds would be expended towards this project. I think the Commission probably needs to have have all of the quote applicants for ARPA funds come in and and have a fully vetted process. So we can sort that out. The question with Our Redeemers, I think now becomes how how does the city budget and plan for the development of the property if it is going to own it?
Yeah, that'd be helpful. And I guess also, you know, what does that look like with all of the other organizations that would be involved in long long-term costs to the community, et cetera? Okay, thank you.
And other comments for, yes, Commissioner Fever?
Thank you, Mayor Collins. And for the City Manager, we are having, however, a scheduled meeting sometime down the road here with with the three folks that are like habitat humanity, YWCA, and RMDC about how they might develop that property. Is that not still scheduled?
I believe that's still scheduled, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, communications from Helen Citizens Council, HCC Representative Diana Hammer.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. I am Diana Hammer. I represent HCC District One. First of all, I want to thank Commissioners Reed and Fever for attending the HCC meeting last week. I think we all really appreciate hearing your thoughts and our discussions about the ways to increase interaction and strengthen communication between the HCC and the Commission. I'd like to also let you know that currently the HCC has a full roster of twenty eight. We have four representatives in each of the seven districts. And we are working to increase our outreach and communication with the district residents. And we're also looking at making several recommendations to the Commission in the near future. So we'll certainly be sending you those your way when they're available or when they're ready. And then finally, HCC is putting together a working group to make recommendations on the upcoming city budget for fiscal twenty three. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hammer. We appreciate your input.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Ms. Hammer? Okay, moving along. At this time, I beg to leave because I have another mirror obligation that is conflicting with the rest of this. So Mayor Pro Tem, Emily Dean will take over the regular items.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to regular item A. This is consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Three Seventeen Cruise Partnership LLC for landscaping and pedestrian infrastructure improvements at Three Seventeen Cruise. I believe Planner Ray is going to present this. City Manager Jordan, do you have anything to add before we pass it off?
No, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thanks, Ms. Ray.
Thanks, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. So yes, tonight before you, I don't have a formal PowerPoint presentation, but tonight before you, as you stated, is a an application for downtown tax increment financing dollars for, pardon me, Three Seventeen Cruise Partners. These are the individuals that bought and have been working on the substantial renovations to the independent record building. And their application for tax increment financing dollars is specifically to install a pedestrian pathway, an ADA pathway, and some zerriscaping on the southwestern corner of the property along Cruise Avenue. This project in total, with all the hardscaping costs, as we learned over the course of the downtown tax increment financing meeting on January thirteenth, is closer to about 310,000 dollars. So the match equivalent is actually quite high on this endeavor. The property owners have an encroachment agreement with the city, which does require them to install this ADA pathway regardless of funding. But this funding will actually allow them to create a much nicer public amenity with the landscaping component. It will create more connectivity between the downtown core as well as the Rodney Street commercial area. And in reviewing this with the downtown tax increment financing board, all of whom voted unanimously in support of this project. And just among staff, we have affirmed that it does meet all the statutory requirements of tax increment financing. So that is the application that is before you, just in a brief nutshell. I do not believe just scanning over the list of attendees that we have a representative for the applicant present tonight. Unfortunately, they might be hanging out there in the wings, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Great, thank you, Ms. Ray. Commissioners, any discussion or questions?
Mayor Pro Tem.
Commissioner Fever.
For for Ellie Ray, I noticed that when the tax increment finance district folks met, they also voted for some other projects. How do they come forward after this one?
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioner Fever, those other two applications have been tabled at this time. We have reviewed them with the City Attorney's Office and confirmed that they actually don't necessarily meet that standard of meeting the statutory requirements and serving the public benefit. So I have had conversations with both of those applicants late last week, actually. And we talked about maybe ways that they can revise applications and seek funding for aspects of their projects that maybe are eligible for financing. And we are going to have the City Attorney's Office also draft a memo to state more clearly for their edification, for staff's edification, and just the communities broadly, what actually does rise to meeting that public benefit standard as stated in statute.
Well, it might be for my benefit too, because I wasn't sure exactly what the process was. Since I saw those items were, you know, in their sense approved for expenditure, and they weren't on our agenda. So thank you very much for that explanation.
Any other questions or comments from the Commission? Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment? Please raise your hand using the raise hand button.
Mayor Pro Tem, Dean, Commissioners, I see no hands raised at this time. I've received no written public comment.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, any final Commission discussion? Now I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Pro Tem. I move to consider a resolution distributing downtown urban renewal district tax increment financing funds to Three Seventeen Cruise Partnership LLC for landscaping and pedestrian infrastructure improvements at Three One Seven Cruise Avenue.
There are second?
Second, sorry.
And moved and seconded and thirded. All right, Madam Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, thank you. We will now move on to public hearings. Item A, consider first passage of an ordinance pre-zoning property described as track two A on the certificate of survey filed as document number five, seven, nine, three, nine, eight, B, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as R three residential. I believe Ms. Ray is also presenting this item.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So tonight before you, as was just mentioned, is an application for pre-zoning of track two A. This is a property that is located approximately 150 feet north of the intersection with West Custer Avenue. As you can see from this vicinity map, the lot in question has been undeveloped. In fact, I don't think it has any of those vehicles that are stored in the rear of the property, as you'll see in photos that I'm about to show you. The applicant is specifically requesting to annex and pre-zon this property so they can develop it ultimately with multifamily residential. That is their intention. That is not a conferred right if approved for pre-zoning. They would still have to submit building plans and so forth. But the property is just shy of 1.6 acres. It is immediately adjacent to the city limits on the west side of Cuny is the Barney subdivision. That is currently zoned R three T sixteen. If you're not familiar with our T standards, they essentially serve as an overlay district. And in the instance of the R three T sixteen, it sets forth nine additional standards that essentially would allow still for the multifamily, but would have heightened dimensional standard limitations associated with them. It's also worth noting, this property is within the city's urban standards boundaries, therefore prioritized for annexation. If this pre-zoning is approved, it will become effective upon annexation. So these are some, again, as I mentioned earlier, photos of the property. The first on the upper left-hand side is looking east toward the direction of McHugh. And you can see that there are some multi-family or mini storage facilities, rather. Those are in the county. Just like the subject property, there's known as urban residential mixed use. That essentially is a designation that has been applied to these county properties, but there aren't any underlying zoning regulations associated with them as yet county are working on that. And you can probably see just beyond the mini storage is the roof line for Remington Apartments, which is known as B two in the city limits. The next photo is looking south toward West Custer. Again, unincorporated urban residential mixed use property. There's a mix of residential and general professional service uses in this area. And then looking west in the top left-hand photo, you see a picture of the properties in the Barney subdivision. And then looking north in the bottom right, that's looking up Cuny Drive. And again, also unincorporated county property. There are mostly residential, some general professional services and beyond that, other ag-related uses. And then in looking at whether this zoning designation that's being sought is actually fitting for the location, we look to state statute section seventy six, two, three, oh, four, one, A, that states that all zoning regulations must be made in accordance with the growth policy. As you can see in the image on the right, that's a rather grainy snapshot of the future land use map, which shows that this area in question is identified as being mixed use long term. And we define those areas in the growth policy as places where people can work, live, play, and learn. They are typified by complementary uses that are well integrated with one another, where you see denser development patterns and there's heightened walkability. This zoning designation that's being sought by the applicant for R three is intended to provide a blend of residential uses as well as compatible non-residential uses. So there are some commercial components that could be allowed. And as such, this is in conformance with the growth policy and that mixed use designation. We also then have to look at two other sections of state statute. The first is section seventy six, two, three, oh, four, one, B, that sets forth the criteria and guidelines for zoning regulations. Zoning regulations must be designed to secure safety from fire and other dangers, promote public health, public safety, and the general welfare, facilitate the adequate provision of municipal services. And then looking at section seventy six, two, three, oh, four, two, A through E. In adopting zoning regulations, we are to consider the reasonable provision of adequate light and air, the effect on motorized and non-motorized transportation systems, promotion of compatible urban growth, the character of the district and its peculiar suitability for particular uses, and conserving the value of buildings, encouraging the most appropriate use of land throughout the jurisdictional area. So in reviewing those factors and criteria with respect to public health, safety, and general welfare, those matters will be promoted through application of our adopted codes and standards. As far as zoning codes are concerned, the use allowances, building and fire codes, and our engineering and design standards, the applicant will be required to finance the installation of any necessary infrastructure to help support those developments. Related to that, there will need to be an extension of infrastructure services with this property when ultimately annexed, including the extension of water and sewer from Russell Lane across the frontage of the property. The city will, when annexed, be served by the police and fire departments from a public safety standpoint as well. With respect to transportation, the applicant, when they resubmitted their application for this in November, they did submit a traffic impact study, and their analysis showed that the developed parcel might produce 205 to 235 vehicle trips per day, which, based on their numbers that they provided, will add some congestion to the Cuny-Custer intersection. But overall, it's expected to have very minimal impact to the level of service in that area. Cuny Drive is an interesting piece. It is annexed into the city already by a resolution that was passed in 2011. It annexed in the length of Cuny Drive, but it didn't specify a width associated with that. So with this annexation, long term, the applicant might also be required to dedicate some additional right of way if it is found that it is not the full sixty feet that would be required of a local street, which is the classification that's been given to Cuny Drive. With the securing of building permits, the applicant will be required to install sidewalks. So as that develops for that is something they would be required to do. Overall, this future development is anticipated to be consistent with surrounding developments in the area that skew heavily residential, but also have a blend of compatible commercial uses surrounding them within the urban standards area and an area that, again, is mixed used by its nature, how it's developed in the county. As far as public information engagement is concerned, this application was noticed twice in the independent record, once ahead of the zoning commission hearing, and then again before tonight's hearing. The zoning commission did unanimously, by the way, recommend approval of this pre-zoning. We did send letters to adjacent property owners. Those were mailed out on December twenty third. So that made the neighbors aware of both the pre-zoning and annexation cases that are before you tonight. That we haven't received any public comments over the course of the zoning commission hearing or otherwise related to either of the cases. So tonight before you then is a recommendation to move to approve first passage of an ordinance pre-zoning property described as track two A on the certificate of survey filed as document number five, seven, nine, three, nine, eight slash B, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as R three residential. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have. I would also like to note that the applicant's representative is available to answer questions you may have of him. His name is Jason Crawford. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. I think before we open it up for discussion, would the applicant like to write any other information that Ms. Ray didn't already mention? Mr. Crawford?
You guys here?
We can.
Evening, Mayor Pro Tem Dean and Commissioners. Thank you. And thanks, Ellie. I think I think Ellie's done a really good job of describing the intent here. And and the work that's gone into it thus far. And I guess I don't have anything else to add at this time. I'm here for questions if you guys have any for me.
Thank you. Commissioners, is there any discussion or questions? Commissioner Logan?
Thank you. Was there any public comment?
Ms. Ray? Oh, you're on mute.
I'm sorry about that. Sorry, Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners. No, we haven't received any public comment.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to public comment. Is there any public comment?
Mayor Pro Tem Commissioners, I see no hands raised online, and I've received no written public comment on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Great. Any final discussion from the Commission? Right, seeing none, I will entertain a motion. Commissioner Logan?
Would move to approve first passage of an ordinance pre-zoning property described as track two A on the certificate of service filed as document five, seven, nine, three, nine, eight slash B, Lewis and Clark County, Montana, as R three resident.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any final comments from the Commission? All right, Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll.
Commissioner Fever?
Aye.
Commissioner Reed?
Aye.
Commissioner Logan?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, we will move on to our last public hearing item, item B. Consider a resolution of intention to annex property legally described in COS number five, seven, nine, three, nine, eight, B, as track two A in Lewis and Clark County into the city of Helena, Montana, and establish the conditions of annexation. Ms. Ray?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So being as we have already discussed, most of the the facts, et cetera, pertaining to this case, I will try to get through this as quickly as I can in the interest of your time. So again, before you tonight, as you just stated, is consideration of a resolution of intention So again, before you tonight, as you just stated, is consideration of a resolution of intention to annex tract two A. Which we already have previously discussed. Again, this is the vicinity map for the property. Back pattern being the same, I will move along through these photos. So the analysis here is very similar, the annexation. You're actually looking to the growth policy. It's not to necessarily just for the moving the annexation forward, looking directly to city codes, per se. That is relevant to infrastructure and so forth, of course. But in this case, again, you're looking at the future land use and what is planned for the area. And again, it's planned to be mixed-use. So the proposed R three district designation that you have recommended be moved forward is already fitting within that. The, I already mentioned previously that water and sewer had to be brought extended from Russell Lane across the full frontage of this property. The property currently has a sewer main that does bisect it. So the applicant may, if they wish, submit an application for variance. So that they can see if they can tap into that existing sewer main for the future development, rather than extend the sewer down the full frontage of the property. That is something that would be done through the Public Works Department, but I just mentioned that in the event that it comes up. But all these other factors remain the same. I've already discussed Cooney Drive and how it is already annexed into the city, so that is not required with any annexation of this property. The public engagement, as mentioned, this application for the annexation was noticed in the Helena Independent Record that was published on the thirteenth of this month. We, as already stated, haven't received any comments on the annexation portion of this overall land use activity. And with this annexation, we do have recommended conditions for you to consider. So I will run through these sort of in summary, but the first set of them relate to infrastructure. So the property owners, as has been mentioned, are going to be required to install infrastructure improvements that do meet city standards. And if they wish to deviate from that, or sorry, pardon me. Or they would have to enter into a development agreement that is acceptable to the city and defines the responsibility for installing them or deferring the improvements. These would be related to signing a waiver of protest to the right to protest a SID for future street improvements. Establishing additional right-of-way on Cooney Drive, again, if it is found to be too narrow of a right-of-way for the classification that has been applied to Cooney Drive as a local street. If they did so, they'd have to actually have that on an amended plat recorded. They will be required to install sidewalks in conformance with the city's engineering and design standards. And they will have to install water and sewer mains and apartment facilities in Cooney Drive across the frontage of the property in conformance with the city codes. Or obtain, as mentioned, applicable variances to either of those sections of code for water. Well, actually, for sewer, in this case, water has to be installed. Establishing an easement for the city to the city for sanitary sewer main that runs through the property if the variance is sought. To section six-three-four, that pertains to the sewer installation. Or verify that the maintenance easement does exist already. The second item is to review, the review of new construction. The property owner must submit plans for you by the city Helena for compliance with infrastructure zoning and any other code requirements, building and fire codes, so forth. And pay all review fees as standard. Taxes and assessments, taxes and assessments must be paid and current at the time of filing of the resolution of annexation. Notice of special districts, the property owner must waive the right to notification and protest and consent to all to the alteration of boundaries of urban foreign maintenance district and landfill monitoring districts in order to include the property prior to annexation. And lastly, completion of conditions. The applicant must complete all of the conditions of annexation within a year of the date of approval of the resolution of intention, if it passed this evening. And then they are required to notify city staff when they have completed all those conditions and are able to proceed with the annexation. So with that all said, the recommendation before you tonight is to move to approve a resolution of intention to annex tract two A located on the eastern side of Cooney Drive as described in COS five seven nine three nine eight slash B into the city of Helena and establish conditions for annexation. And with that, I'm again happy to take any questions you may have of me, and I'm sure the same is true of Jason Crawford.
Thank you, Ms. Ray. You're very efficient in these presentations. Before I open it up to the commission, does the applicant wish to add any other comments before we open it up for discussion?
Thank you, Mayor Protem Dean and Commissioners. Again, I think Ellie's done a good job. And I don't have anything else to add at this time.
Great, thank you, Mr. Crawford. Any commission discussion? Questions? Commissioner Fever.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. And this is for Ellie Ray. Ellie, could you go back to the map?
Mayor Protem Commissioner Fever is the one that's on the screen.
No, 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 the one that shows our city, if you will, this map. I've just got to look at this and it does just kind of tickle me. This whole property here looks like it's not in the city and we're annexing a part of it. But in the narrative that you provided, other, other property holders in this area appear to be interested in annexation as well, or at least not opposed to it. Is that going to be something forthcoming down the road here, or is that just discussion?
Mayor Protem and Commissioner Fever, the, any, this is an annexation by petition. So the property owner in question specifically came to the city seeking annexation of this one parcel. There, I, from what I understand from the former community development director Sharon Haugen, there are others that are north of this property that may consider a similar request of the city to annex by petition. I do not know of a timeline related to those. It did come up as a question from the zoning commission chair actually as well. So it's, you know, worthwhile that you do bring that up and note that. But there's no defined timeline at present for when we might see such applications. But certainly, this area is immediately adjacent. All of these properties are, you know, city services are not, you know, terribly far away to extend them as has been shown with this current case. So planning for that eventual growth, not just for these properties immediately north of this one on the eastern side of Cooney, but even going as far as Cooney Home and Beyond, I think, is something that we'll be hopefully seeing in coming years and planning for accordingly.
Well, I hope so too. So thank you very much for your report. I'm grateful.
Any other discussion from the commission? Ms. Ray, I do have one question, a similar vein of Commissioner Fever's. I read that same note in the zoning commission's discussion of Garden Works and other properties farther north. I guess my question, at what point or what triggers the city to consider street improvements or upgrades? I know that we don't have all, we don't have infrastructure out there that is up to standards from what I can see. And so I guess what triggers that? And is there a mechanism to help the city pay for those type of upgrades if we continue to see the increased annexations, you know, with this property and beyond?
Mayor Protem Dean and Commissioners, I would actually defer to Director Knopki on that point.
Okay, I don't know if. He is there. Okay, great, excellent. Dr. Knopki, not to put you on the spot.
Thank you, Mayor Protem and Commissioners. What would trigger street improvements along Cooney there, for example, would be, you know, the rest of the annexation. As far as funding. Can come from the street maintenance, but typically they come through SIDs, special improvement districts, to improve those areas. And those are our two basic funding mechanisms, but since they are directly adjacent and using city property or using those amenities, then, you know, a method in the past has been an SID.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you. Any other commission discussion? Right, we'll entertain public comment. If you have any public comment, please raise your hand.
Mayor Protem Dean, I have no hands raised and no written public comment on this item.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Any final discussion from the commission? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor Protem Dean. Move to approve a resolution of intention to annex tract two A located on the eastern side of Cooney Drive as described in COS number five seven nine three nine eight E into the city of Helena and establish the conditions for annexation.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Commissioner Fever.
Aye.
Commissioner Reed.
Aye.
Commissioner Logan.
Aye.
Mayor Protem Dean.
Aye.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item twelve, public communications. Is there any public comment on any item that was not on the agenda tonight? Please raise your hand.
Mayor Protem Dean Commissioners, I see no hands raised or written public comment for general public comment.
Thank you. I guess at this point, interim city manager, do you have your directions from the commission comments and any other item? If you're talking, you're on mute.
We're all gonna get stung by that today. I thought I clicked it. My finger wasn't on the right spot. So I, my understanding is on the ad hoc recruitment committee, there's actually no work for manager or staff. We will work on getting a flag up at the city county building and the civic center, and the mayor will do what he can to see if a flag can be flown up at the Capitol Building. And that's the two notes that I have.
Excellent. And I would just like to know on, I was going to mention, I should have said this during the commission comments. I can understand if we do not have a Ukrainian flag at our fingertips immediately. But I, I would note that if it's possible, maybe using the civic center LED board as a, as a interim solution, because I could understand why that might take a few days.
Mayor Protem, that's an excellent idea. I didn't think of that at all. I see nothing under what we decided here earlier that would get in the way of, you know, we can't be so rigid that we couldn't go that direction if we wanted. And so thanks for bringing that up.
Thank you, Commissioner. Okay, any other items from the commission? Excellent. Seeing none, this meeting is adjourned.